Government will work with us as part of their regional studies to look at how can they can advance that project long term? And how can they can invest in potentially even bus rapid transit lanes between Barhaven and Kanata on the four sixteen? Uh, I think it's worth exploring. That's my time, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to speak to again to some local issues and larger issues. And again, I thank staff for the work on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor De Rush, councillor Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and credit to staff for so much great work. I know it's been a long and arduous, but I we're almost at the finish line. Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, with regards to councillor Gowers' motion, I won't be asking the councillor to make any friendly amendments. Councillor Skolski and I will be moving a motion so we can look at some potential options for rural Ottawa. I would say though councillors that we already leverage private sector and not-for-profit companies to help rural residents. There are many rideshare groups that operate across rural Ottawa with the goal of reducing congestion and ride sharing as they commute into the city. I think we're missing a major opportunity if we limit this just to OC transport. The urban transit area is smaller than my ward in landmass. So we need to remember that rural Ottawa being eighty percent of the city might require different options, and that's okay. Doesn't mean one is better than the other, but I think we need to practice the art of the possible and be pragmatic. And so if staff are already going to be doing this work to look at options to increase mode share across the city, which I think all of council supports, then we shouldn't leave potential options off of the table. And so the motion that I'll be moving in a few minutes, once we get it circulated through the clerk's office and colleagues' inboxes, just speaks to that, making sure that we put more options on the table. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Uh, so do you, do you have that motion or?
I have the text of the motion, Mr. Mayor. I've shared it with the clerk's office. I can read it in now and we can put it up on the screen later if that's your preference.
Yeah, why don't you read it in now?
Sure. Whereas the city of Ottawa is developing part two of its transportation master plan with a goal of increasing mode share for transit citywide. And whereas rural Ottawa represents eighty percent of the city's geographic area and faces unique challenges in providing accessible transit and transportation options for residents. And whereas city services already rely on a mix of municipal, private and not-for-profit providers to enable rural residents to travel across Ottawa for work, school and other essential activities. And whereas opportunities may exist to further leverage private and not-for-profit service providers to improve transportation options, increase flexibility and help achieve the city's transit mode share objectives, objectives, especially in rural communities. Therefore, be it resolved that council direct staff as part of the development of the transportation master plan part two to identify and report back on opportunities to further leverage private and not-for-profit transportation service providers alongside city-operated transit services with the specific goal of increasing transit mode share across Ottawa, including rural areas. And be it further resolved that staff report include examples and best practices from other jurisdictions and outline potential modals, partnerships and pilot programs that could support the city's objectives for increased transit ridership in both urban and rural Ottawa. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Councillor Kits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so on my motion, I think it's critically important that we start having a conversation uh with the province and federal government on establishing a regional transportation network uh beyond the city limits of Ottawa. Rockland is booming, Russell, Carlton Place, Kentville. Um, in the east end, seventy-five percent of inbound volume across the southeastern greenbelt between Anderson and Boundary is made up of external trips. Quite frankly, we are being strangled by the growth of our neighboring municipalities. Um, and it's time to start having a serious conversation about how growth and transportation is being managed uh outside the limits of the city of Ottawa. Uh, so I want to thank you, Mayor, for working with me on on that motion and hope to get support around the table. Um, on on the TMP, I made impassioned comments at committee that I will try not to repeat. But um, there is no file that is more important to my community than this one. And it's because the transportation situation in Ward nineteen is deeply impacting quality of life. You have all heard me say this one hundred times. The roads are over capacity, the transit is inadequate, and active transportation is either absent or unsafe. And what happens when you have those factors, when you're late for work every day or for childcare pickup or for medical appointments, when efficient transit is not an option, so you are forced to spend money on a car or a second car. When you feel unsafe allowing your children to walk to the park or to school, it has an impact on your quality of life. It's not good planning. Um, the twenty thirteen TMP was quiet on the anticipated growth of Orleans South, which is why we're in the situation that we're in and why I was adamant that this TMP update prioritized growth. On building permits alone, Ward nineteen ranked second citywide, just forty-five units shy of the top spot in Somerset Ward. Um, and looking ahead, we have over fifteen thousand new homes planned for my community in the next fifteen years. Currently, twelve percent of all population growth or last year, all twelve percent of all population growth in Ottawa was in Ward nineteen. So we know we can't stop or slow down the building of new homes. Um, not only because it's necessary, but it's largely out of our hands. So we cannot continue to construct incomplete communities. I have been working on this TMP update for years full-time. Um, my obsession with this issue and all of the motions and directions I've brought forward, my inquiry exposing the funding gaps, my insistence on bringing this up at every possible opportunity uh is quite honestly not to score political points. But it is because the quality of life of my residents is being impacted. Um, they elected me to do something about that and I take it very seriously. I want to give them options. I want to give them sustainable options. Um, so I am very pleased that this TMP really moves the needle for Orleans South. There were no realignment and in this transit priority measures um that were formerly at a stalemate with the NCC are already underway. The long-awaited widening of Brian Coburn, turning it into a complete street with better access to transit and segregated, segregated walking and cycling is being prioritized. The Cumberland BRT that has been on the books since I was nine years old is finally going to move forward and critical intersections will be improved. So I really want to thank um all of you actually for your support. I feel like you have listened to my pleas and that there is a broad recognition that there is a problem in Orleans South that needs to be fixed. Um, and I want to thank uh you, Mr. Mayor, for your support, to the city manager, to Vivi, to the whole TMP team, Jennifer, Deb, Katerina. Um, you have spent countless meetings with me on this. Um, and to my team, particularly Adam Haga, who has uh spent countless hours on this file. Um, but also to the residents of Orleans South, we led the public engagement in both phases of the TMP. Um, and I think that's because the community joined me in refusing to let the status quo continue. I don't think that these improvements have happened by accident. Uh, it has taken relentless advocacy. Um, so I, it's been a pleasure to work on this alongside Chair Tierney and with the support of of my East colleagues. Um, but I do think in Orleans South, but really across the city, we are taking a big step forward today um and moving the needle in a pivotal way for how growth is is managed in our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Kits. Councillor Leeper.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, just a couple of questions to start. When did the transportation master plan process begin?
I believe the terms of reference were approved in twenty twenty. Let me uh, I'm gonna say twenty twenty, but it's been many years. Uh, and uh, we collected, we had to break the project into two parts because of the the pandemic.
How much has it cost?
If I can jump in, so uh, to clarify, it was twenty eighteen, I guess the terms of reference were approved. My staff is uh pasting in information for me. And the cost uh has been about one and a half million dollars for the consultant studies.
Um, does that include the destination origin study?
Uh, no, that would be in addition. Uh, the Origin Destination Survey is conducted in partnership with uh all of the agencies in the National Capital Region. In addition, that would not include the update of our transportation models, which is also jointly funded through all of the agencies in the National Capital Region.
So this is a multi-million dollar process?
That's correct.
The, has it been open to councillors um since the outset to communicate with staff what their priorities are for the transportation master plan?
Uh, yes, uh, there's been multiple engagements throughout the entire process.
What has been the level of submission or the intensity of submission by the public stakeholders and councillors in favor of a ring road? Since the beginning of this process?
Uh, I, there have been mentions of a ring road uh through residents that I have seen, but certainly it is not uh uh high level of uh of comments that we've received compared to other uh issues that residents have raised.
Okay. Um, and and why is it not, why is ring road? Um, how intensively did you study a ring road as as one of the potential pieces of that holistic transportation network?
Uh, so uh, as part of our transportation modeling analysis, we look for needs and opportunities in the network. And so uh, from a needs perspective to twenty forty-six, uh, we did not see uh, a need uh for a ring road uh within that time horizon. And because the project uh is not funded or no funding announcement from the provincial government, we did not include it as a committed project from another level of government, which we would have if if those funding commitments had been made.
Do, would we have had the data um to analyze what the uh potential benefit or impact would be?
Uh, so no additional information would be needed uh particularly on the commercial vehicle travel patterns. And uh, we would anticipate as a provincial initiative that they would take the lead uh in that data collection.
Okay, so since twenty nineteen, we've been collecting millions of dollars worth of data. We've had millions of dollars worth of consultants. We've had the opportunity for the public and for councillors to weigh in with staff to say, here's a potential priority. And we've gotten here today with what I think is an extremely well-crafted transportation master plan uh that treats the entire network across all the different modes in a holistic fashion. Um, and I I'm going to suggest that it is the time to put a ring road on the table would have been several years ago. It's not something that we can look at at the end of the process. Um, but I do understand councillor Tierney's concern that the province has mentioned it. Uh, and I want to congratulate the mover of the motion and thank the mover of the motion. Um, and I know the mayor's office has had some significant um uh offered help on on putting this motion together as well. With the very careful language, it says, we do need to understand what the potential implications of a ring road or the various different other measures that both the federal and the provincial government have raised would have on our transportation system. But none of those are coming anytime soon. We have time to understand them. I would suggest most observers would consider um a potential build of a ring road to be a highly unlikely scenario for us moving forward. But staff have crafted in the meantime, a transportation network across all of the different modes that serves a very expert understanding of what this city's needs will be through at least twenty forty-six. No one has suggested that they should study or no one has not had the opportunity to put other pieces on the table. Um, I I think it's really important that we recognize the work that staff have done to craft an expert, professional visionary document to serve this city's transportation needs. Um, the the mover of this motion um has put a replacement language in here that doesn't take anything off the table, but that directs staff to begin the process of understanding what the implications of those some potentially highly unlikely projects would be. And we have the data to understand that. But we've arrived here today without council and without staff and without the public having suggested that we should have a ring road around the city. Uh, and I think it's important that we support the plan that staff have put in front of us. Um, so I I'm really pleased to be able to support councillor Johnson's motion um this afternoon. And I'll leave it there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Leeper. Councillor Troster.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank staff for all the incredible work you did on the transportation master plan. Um, I would like to see us pushing the mode share further, uh, but this also still represents some incredible work on behalf of our city. Um, I will be supporting councillor Johnson's motion today, and I just wanted to explain that because I originally supported councillor Tierney's motion at committee. But then sober second thought, um, frankly, I regretted that decision. Councillor Tierney, you're incredibly convincing, so are the East End councillors, and I want to thank you. And I want to say I have a lot of respect for the advocacy you're doing for your community. But I worry, first of all, there's been no discussion of what a ring road would mean in terms of the people who live on the periphery of where this road could be. It could involve, you know, having to demolish homes. It, I just don't have a strong sense of what this would mean in terms of the people who live there. And at the end of the day, the way we are going to make a significant difference in reducing traffic and congestion is by getting people off the road, not by building a new one. And I wouldn't be comfortable supporting a ring road until I thought that we were doing absolutely possible, everything possible to make transit the most attractive, the most frequent and the most reliable option. Because right now people are saying they're taking their cars because they don't feel they have a choice. I don't believe we're giving them the choice right now to make what I think is a better decision and what we know uh will lead to a reduction in traffic and congestion. Right now I have a ton of high-density development downtown. It is all low car ratio. It all depends on transit. Um, so I really want to see more people taking the train, which runs parallel to the four seventeen, before we consider building a new road. Um, but I do want to thank the East End councillors because your uh concerns, I understand them well now, and I think you're all really great advocates for your community. I just wanted to speak, now I haven't seen the motion yet um from councillor Skolski, but I just, you know, I used to work for the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and I got a really broad sense of how transit was working across the country. And there's a real cautionary tale out of a town called Innisville, Ontario, that instead of investing in public transit, decided to try to make a deal with Uber. And it ended up costing them more than it would have to run a bus. I believe if we want to see public transit options in our rural communities, they should be public transit options, and I would be entirely supportive. I'm very, very worried about any suggestion of a private operator because the examples that we've seen in other communities have not gone well and they've left cities or towns beholden to private operators. So um, I can't support a motion that explores private transportation when we have OC transport and we have the ability to expand it. And if it's a priority, that's something I'm willing to support. Um, anyway, thank you very much to everyone today and uh, um, I really appreciate all the work that everybody's put into this.
Thank you, councillor Troster. Councillor Lowe.
Thanks very much, Mayor. Um, um, I first want to thank um, thank staff who've uh, so on the Amazon, on the Amazon thing that uh that councillor Hill brought up. I do want to thank staff uh for for all the dialogue that they've provided me with, within and without the the TMP process. There are a lot of items that we will have to look at from a um holistic point of view for the whole community because it's not just one or two intersections. It's not just um Prince of Wales Drive, which I'm grateful is in the TMP. Um, and it's not, uh, it's not just Fallowfield Road. There are spot improvements. There are things that are not in the TMP that we can, that we have to, and I will be working with staff with such as uh, such as um, you know, things, prohibitions on truck routes and then using residential streets and all that. So that conversation will continue for for any of my residents, for any people in Barhaven who are who are watching this. Um, those conversations will continue until Amazon's operational, beyond the time it's operational. And this is top of mind for for both councillor, at least councillor Hill and me. Um, the motion uh, the motion that speaks to the regional transportation planning, I think, is important given that there are, you know, I I grew up in in the Greater Toronto area where there are, there were eleven transit agencies. Actually, there still are eleven transit agencies that were not integrated at that time. And we, you know, I got to experience difficulties of going from uh Markham to Vaughan, down to Toronto, over to Mississauga. Rarely, but I, but I did it a few times. And how that integrated and how that integrated planning through Metrolinks um eventually improved um how that area moves. I've also visited Washington DC before all the stuff happened recently. And, you know, they they have the capital city, but they also have many municipalities around in Virginia and Maryland, like Bethesda County. They have Arlington, uh Reston and all that, and they have one semi-unified transit system. You know, that unfortunately does go through the federal government, but still the principle is there. So, so I think there are a lot of successful models that we can, we can look at to to see what we can do to improve our integration with Gatno, with um, with Rockland, with Carlton Place, um, or even down to, and even down to Kentville. So I'm supportive of that motion. Um, my last comment, uh, yeah, my last comment on on the motion on the Johnson uh, right, yeah, the Johnson motion. I, I understand that, you know, something like the ring road is a, is in a provincial document and therefore a provincial project. But I also see nothing wrong with advocating for it um through our uh, through through our policies. And, you know, through, along the Rideau River, there's, it's all private property, so some form of expropriation will have to happen unless that ring road goes across Fallowfield Road. That is the only sort of public piece of land that's left along the Rideau River. So, and that that's NCC land, sort of. Um, and and so with, with with that extra advocacy from us, with the advocacy from the province, you know, I'm sure we can get the feds and the NCC to at least entertain the idea seriously. Like, we're not, we're not telling them to invest the money now. Um, we're asking them to, you know, but I think the intention is that we're asking them to at least seriously entertain it, all levels of government to to ensure that um, our our transportation priorities are, are considered and thought about along with the regional framework that uh, that councillor Kits has moved. So um, I'm willing to, I'm willing to support those. And um, and, you know, again, thanks to staff for for the, for all their help throughout the process, for all the help outside the process as well and uh as well for the stuff with Prince of Wales. Mayor, thanks.
Okay, thank you, councillor Lowe. Um, so I I too wanted to thank staff for all of the hard work that has gone into this. And I wanted to thank members of the uh, uh, members of Peewik for their work and especially the chair for all of the work that he uh has done to uh bring the transportation master plan to this point. It is a very, very important document and I, obviously, I I hear from councillors all the time and I hear from residents all the time about their concerns and their priorities. And so to capture uh all of those priorities and to move forward on some important projects through the TMP, uh, when we are balancing the interests of twenty-four different wards, when we're balancing the interests of urban communities, suburban communities and rural communities, that is no small accomplishment. Uh, so I want to highlight the great work that's been done by staff and by uh the committee and by the committee chair to uh to bring us to this point. Uh, just on the issue of uh the discussion around the ring road, I just wanted to ask staff if uh regardless of any motion that that passes or doesn't pass today, if the provincial government were to proceed with a uh study on a ring road at some point in the future, uh, if that was their decision, because a ring road would be under their uh mandate, uh, I I assume we would, we would collaborate with them on that study. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and if, and if they were to come back and say, we want to proceed with a ring road in the Ottawa area, we would collaborate with them on that, on that project?
Yes.
Okay, and nothing about any motions that, you know, my understanding is nothing about any motions that pass or don't pass today will change that. Um, so, you know, I I do appreciate the intent of of what councillor Tierney uh brought forward and the the fact that we need to address the the congestion in a number of different areas and we need to keep all options and solutions on the table. So I I'll be honest, I did not come into this having strong feelings, one way or the other, about the exact wording of where we needed to land on this. To me, we have a great transportation master plan. I want to highlight the priorities and objectives in that. I want to underscore in our advocacy to other levels of government what our priorities are right now. Uh, and I think the TMP makes that clear. Um, and, you know, I think regardless of what happens today with this other uh discussion and this other motion, I think we'll be ready to work with our provincial partners on transportation solutions, including potentially a ring road in the future. If that's their, if that's what they want to see for, happen in our city. Um, okay, so let's go through the um motions then, and there is one direction. Uh, councillor Devine, if you wanted to read your direction now, just to be clear, I believe it's, it's okay with staff. So if you could just read that in and then we'll go through the motions.
Thank you, Chair. Um, that staff be directed to report on the balance between all development charges as a whole, collected and spent over time between inside greenbelt and outside greenbelt.
Okay, and staff are good with that. Thank you. Um, so on councillor Bradley's motion then, is that carried? Councillor Curry's motion, is that carried? Councillor Kavanaugh's motion, is that carried? Councillor Kits's motion, carried? Thank you. Um, on councillor Johnson's motion then, let's have a recorded vote, please.
Councillor Dulauf.
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Councillor Bradley.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly.
No.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Hill.
No.
Councillor Dudas.
Councillor Brown.
No.
Councillor Leeper.
Yes.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor Curry.
Yes.
Councillor Skolski.
Yes.
Conseilleur Plante.
Oui.
Councillor Troster.
Yes.
Councillor Hubley.
No.
Councillor Lowe.
Yes.
Conseilier De Rush.
No.
Councillor Devine.
Yes.
Councillor Carr.
Yes.
Councillor Kits.
No.
Mayor Sutcliffe.
Yes.
Sixteen yeas, eight nays.
Thank you. Um, on councillor John, councillor Gowers' first motion, seconded by councillor Johnson on the TMP uh policies update on action items, is that carried? Oh, sorry, and and there was an amendment to that, right? Yeah, there was a friendly amendment to that. Okay, so as amended, that's carried. Councillor Gowers' um motion on increasing the mode share for transit, is that carried? And then we have councillor Brown's motion, seconded by councillor Skolski. And I understand there's a slight amendment just removing the line as part of the development of the transportation master plan part two.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and the title was incorrect originally when it was distributed, and it is not a replacement motion, so that was amended. And if I could say with the flexibility of council, that staff have indicated that if the motion passes, they can also take this back to the Transit Long Range Sponsors Group as well for review.
Okay. So on councillor Brown's motion, is that carried?
Carried.
Okay.
Dissent, please. Thank you.
Dissent from councillor Troster. Okay, uh, and on the transportation master plan as amended then, is that carried?
Mr. Mayor, uh, could you, could you just record a dissent for me on recommendation one, document one, annexe B, road projects with respect to the north-south uh protecting the north-south quarters? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, councillor De Rush. Okay. Moving on to item nineteen on the agenda, which is our in-camera items. I'll ask councillor Devine to read the motion to move in camera, please.
Be it resolved that city council resolve in camera pursuant to procedure bylaw twenty twenty-five one hundred, subsections thirteen one E litigation or potential litigation affecting the city and thirteen one F, the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose with respect to the light rail transit LRT legal updates and related remedial matters. And be it further resolved, the city council remain in camera pursuant to procedure bylaw twenty twenty-five one hundred, subsections thirteen one D, labor relations and employee negotiations and thirteen one F, the receiving advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose to receive information with respect to collective bargaining updates. And be it further resolved that city council remain in camera pursuant to procedure bylaw twenty twenty-five one hundred, subsections thirteen one C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land for the purposes of the city and subsection thirteen one J, a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the By or on behalf of the municipality to receive information with respect to potential property acquisition, negotiations update. Be it resolved that city council, no, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Divine. Is that carried? All right, we'll move in camera and resume as soon as possible. Thank you.
Audio test.
Test.
Okay, we're going to start again as soon as possible. Everyone ready? For the benefit of the public joining us, Ottawa City Council just met in camera pursuant to procedure by law 2025-100 as follows. Subsections 13-1E litigation or potential litigation affecting the city and 13-1F the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, to receive information with respect to the light rail transit legal updates and related remedial matters. And subsections 13-1D labor relations and employee negotiations and 13-1F the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, to receive information with respect to collective bargaining updates. And subsections 13-1C a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land for the purposes of the city. And subsection 13-1J a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality to receive information with respect to potential property acquisition negotiations update. During the closed session, no votes were taken other than procedural motions and/or directions to staff. So we will move to the motion to adopt reports, councillor Devine.
That the report from Ottawa Board of Health entitled Appointment of a Medical Officer of Health in Camera Personal Matters About Identifiable Individual. The report from Ottawa Police Service Board entitled Ottawa Police Service Board Annual Report 2024 Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 26. Built Heritage Committee Report 24. Community Services Committee Report 17. Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee Report 18. Finance and Corporate Services Committee Report 26. Planning and Housing Committee Report 50. Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Report 20. And the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of June 25, 2025 Be Received and Adopted As amended.
Is that carried? Thank you. We have a number of motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, all of which are of a time-sensitive nature, so that's the reason in every case. So first a motion from councillor Leeper on demolition control for 181 and 183 Holland Avenue on suspension of the rules, is that carried? Councillor Leeper?
Thank you, I won't read all the be it resolved. Sorry, I will be reading a bunch where be it resolved. So this is with respect to 181, 183 Holland Avenue, be it therefore be it resolved. The
Audio test.
Test.
Okay, we're gonna start again in as soon as possible. Everyone ready? For the benefit of the public joining us, Ottawa City Council just met in camera pursuant to procedure by law two thousand twenty five one hundred as follows. Subsections thirteen one E litigation or potential litigation affecting the city and thirteen one F the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege. Including communications necessary for that purpose. To receive information with respect to the light rail transit legal updates and related remedial matters. And subsections thirteen one D labor relations and employee negotiations and thirteen one F the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications. Necessary for that purpose to receive information with respect to collective bargaining updates. And subsections thirteen one C. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land for the purposes of the city. And subsection thirteen one J a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on. Or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality. To receive information with respect to potential property acquisition negotiations update. During the closed session, no votes were taken other than procedural motions and or directions to staff. So we will move to the motion to adopt reports, councillor Devine.
That the report from Ottawa Board of Health entitled Appointment of a Medical Officer of Health in Camera Personal Matters About Identifiable Individual. The report from Ottawa Police Service Board entitled Ottawa Police Service Board Annual Report two thousand twenty four. Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report twenty six. Built Heritage Committee Report twenty four Community Services Committee Report seventeen. Emergency Preparedness and Protective Services Committee Report eighteen. Finance and Corporate Services Committee Report twenty six Planning and Housing Committee Committee Report fifty. Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Report twenty. And the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act. Explanation requirements at the city council meeting of June twenty five, two thousand twenty five be received and adopted as amended.
Is that carried? Thank you. We have a number of motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, all of which are of a time sensitive nature. So that's the reason in every case. So first a motion from councillor Leeper on demolition control for one eighty one and one eighty three Holland Avenue on suspension of the rules. Is that carried? Councillor Leeper?
Thank you. I won't read all the be it resolved. Sorry, I will be reading a bunch of where be it resolved. So this is with respect to one eighty one, one eighty three Holland Avenue, be it therefore be it resolved that council approved demolition control for the existing buildings on the property. Be it further resolved that replacement building be substantially completed within five years from the date of this approval and in default thereof, the city clerk shall enter. On the collector's roll the sum of nine thousand three hundred ninety three dollars for each of the two residential dwelling units to be demolished. Be it further resolved that until such time of the construction of the first replacement building, the registered owner shall landscape the property to the satisfaction of the general manager of planning. Development and Building Services. The registered owner shall prohibit the use of the property for other interim uses and maintain the property in accordance with the property standards by law. And be it further resolved that the landscaping shall include permanent transparent fencing prohibiting access to the property as well as soft landscaping along the entire frontage. To a depth of four meters and low shrubs, as well as putting down grass seed or sod on the entirety of the property. And be it further resolved that the registered owner shall enter into an agreement with the city of Ottawa to include the foregoing conditions. And pay all costs associated with the registration of said agreement. At such time as a building permit is issued to redevelop the sites and replacement buildings in place. The agreement will become null and void and will be released upon request of the owner. The owner shall pay all costs associated with the release of the agreement. And be it further resolved that the registered owner agrees that a demolition permit will not be issued and the buildings cannot be demolished until such time. That the agreement referenced herein has been executed and registered on title. And be it further resolved that this approval is considered null and void if the agreement is not executed within six months of council approval. This is the old gas station. It's at the corner of Holland and Tyndale. I know them. They're small landowner. They're just coming up with some challenges trying to get the site developed. So hope colleagues can support us on this one.
Thank you councillor Leeper. Is that carried? Next, a motion from councillor Leeper on demolition agreement for seventy nine Gig Avenue on suspension of the rules. Is that carried? Councillor Leeper?
Okay, so this one therefore be it resolved that council approve an amendment to the demolition agreement as follows. The actually, sorry, let me just read the whereas clauses. Whereas the report recommends approval of demolition of the building seventy nine Giga Avenue under the Ontario Heritage Act and a waiver of the requirements of the demolition control by law. And whereas a motion was passed at council on December eleventh, two thousand twenty four. That in the absence of plans for new construction and in order to conserve the streetscape of the heritage conservation district. The owner will enter into a development agreement with the city prior to the issuance of a demolition permit. And whereas the property owner was not able to meet the deadlines in the original demolition agreement. But now is moving forward with the project and the demolition agreement must be reissued and updated. Therefore be it resolved that council approve an amendment to the demolition agreement as follows. The owner to submit a heritage permit application for the new construction within twelve months from the date of issuance of a demolition. The owner to obtain a building permit for the construction within six months of the issuance of the heritage permit by city council. The replacement building shall be substantially completed within twenty four months from the date of the issuance. Of the building permit for the new construction and. If the owner is in default on any of the timelines outlined, the city clerk shall enter onto the collector's roll the sum of one thousand dollars for the residential dwelling which was demolished. For each month thereafter that a residential dwelling is not constructed except insofar as any delays attributable to the city. Not meeting policy or statutory review and approval deadlines. Be it further resolved that council enter into the amended agreement. So this one was a really interesting opportunity for council to put a condition on the demolition that would see us. Essentially receive revenues or. The developer would have to pay if they didn't develop. And I'm really pleased that even though the original deadline wasn't met, that they have staff have gotten them to agree to that condition. And now subject to a more realistic timeframe.
Okay, thank you councillor Leeper. Is that carried? Councillor Trossard has a motion regarding Bill nine, the Municipal Accountability Act. Providing our feedback before the deadline, which is before our next council meeting on suspension of the rules. Is that carried? Councillor Trossard?
Thank you, mayor. And I know this is adding a heavy topic at the end of a very long day, so I will read the motion and very quickly explain. Whereas the government of Ontario has introduced Bill nine, the Municipal Accountability Act two thousand twenty five to amend the Municipal Act two thousand one. And City of Toronto Act two thousand six to strengthen and standardize municipal codes of conduct. And the Integrity Commissioner framework for Ontario. And whereas the city of Ottawa has had a unique and robust code of conduct for members of council reflecting its individual culture. Since two thousand thirteen and the code of conduct is subject to regulated reviews and updates to address any local needs and issues encountered. And whereas there's value in uniform baseline code of conduct for all Ontario municipalities that prescribes core elements, minimum standard requirements. But municipalities should maintain the ability to build on these core elements, tailoring their respective codes of conduct to meet their local need. And whereas Bill nine, the Municipal Accountability Act two thousand twenty five includes a new process through which a member may be removed and disqualified from office. If they are in serious violation of the code of conduct. Upon the recommendation of the Municipal Integrity Commissioner, a concurring report recommendation from the Integrity Commissioner of Ontario. And a unanimous vote of council in favor of the Integrity Commissioner of Ontario's recommendation. And whereas Bill nine would prohibit a municipal council from imposing any existing penalties. Under the municipal act, should a member of council be found in a serious violation of the code and the council not unanimously vote for removal. And whereas municipalities should maintain flexibility in imposing penalties, i.e. reprimand and or suspension of pay. In instances of serious violations of the code of conduct where unanimous support for removal and disqualification from office is not attained. Whereas in recent years, Ottawa City Council has expressed support for legislative amendments to address code of conduct related manners, including as follows. On November twenty fifth, two thousand twenty, in response to two reports from the city. Of Ottawa Integrity Commissioner identifying issues of harassment at Ottawa City Hall, Ottawa City Council approved motion number. Forty four slash four, which in part sought revision to municipal act that would provide for the vacating of the seat of a member of council. Who has been found on clear and convincing evidence to have committed serious misconduct, including any definitions necessary for the implementation of such a provision. And on October fifth, two thousand twenty two, Ottawa City Council approved. A motion which requested that the mayor write to the premier of Ontario to support that the support Bill five, the Stopping Harassment and Abuse by Local Leaders Act two thousand twenty two. And asked that the government of Ontario fast track the approval of this legislation as soon as operationally. Practicable and on May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three, Ottawa City Council approved. A motion which requested that the mayor write to the premier of Ontario to express support for Bill five. Same bill essentially. Whereas the city of Ottawa's integrity commissioner was consulted on the development of this motion and is supportive of the position being taken. Therefore be it resolved that Ottawa City Council support in principle the intent of Bill nine, the Municipal Accountability Act two thousand twenty five. With the following caveats and recommended amendments that the as the to the bill as it is currently written. One municipalities should have the ability to tailor the codes of conduct to reflect their local and individual needs. Providing the core elements of any prescribed code of conduct are met. And municipalities should have the ability to impose additional penalties. I e. Reprimand and or suspension of pay. In the case of serious violations of the code of conduct or unanimous vote of council in support of removal and disqualification from office is not attained. And the requirement for unanimous vote by municipal council for removal of a member be replaced with a requirement. For a super majority of two thirds or three quarters of the members of that council. Be it further resolved that a copy of this motion be sent to the Ontario Standing Committee on Heritage, Infrastructure and Cultural Policy. As the city of Ottawa's written submission on Bill nine, the Municipal Accountability Act two thousand twenty five. So just to say really quickly, I spoke to the provincial committee hearings last week about this bill, as did councillor Brockington. There are some from what from our perspective and the perspective of our integrity commissioner, there are some flaws with this bill, a vote to remove. The final vote to remove a councillor from office who's who's been. Found guilty of buying two integrity commissioners of really egregious acts. Would require a one hundred percent unanimous vote of council. That means nobody could get up to go to the bathroom. Nobody could be sick that day. All it would take is one friend. You know, supporting a perpetrator or frankly, somebody who had to be absent because their kid was sick. So. The ask across the board is for a slightly lower threshold, even though it's still quite high. And then the other problem that we anticipate is that should the vote to remove. Fail council. Right now, as the bill is written, there's no opportunity. For the local integrity commissioner to recommend lower penalties in the case. Of somebody who has exhibited serious misconduct and that would essentially allow the person to get off scot free. We all know one of the motivating factors for this bill was a former councillor in the city of Ottawa and their horrendous actions. So. I hope you'll join me in expressing support for Bill nine and also. These potential amendments that could really improve it and make it a better process for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trossard. Is that carried? Councillor Johnson has a motion on waiving of fees for Morrison Gardens Community House on suspension of the rules. Is that carried? Councillor Johnson?
Whereas the Ottawa Community Housing Foundation, OCHC, and Ottawa Community Housing nonprofit organizations are upgrading and renewing a community house at Lisa Park, which OCH leases from the city of Ottawa. And whereas this project will ensure that the community house is access. Is accessibility for on Ontarians with disabilities act compliant and will provide functional programming space for community led activities as well as programming from the Pinecrest Queensway Community Health Centre. To OCH residents in the surrounding community. And whereas the Ontario Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility has approved. A sixty thousand dollar funding grant through the two thousand twenty four, twenty five inclusive community grants program. And the project has secured donations from various donors such as the United Way. And whereas the reimbursement program for development related fees for charitable and nonprofit organization provides for reimbursement of fifty percent of building permit fees after final. Inspection and whereas this project is for the public good and in the public interest, therefore be it resolved that the building permit fee of up to three thousand dollars in respect of permit application CON two thousand twenty five. Zero zero nine nine one eight be covered at a hundred percent. Under the reimbursement program for development related fees for charitable and nonprofit organizations, once the program application form has been completed. And thank you to councillor Kavanaugh for seconding the motion.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Is that carried? Councillor Carr has a motion regarding restricted areas for driving schools, which in her absence will be moved by councillor Menard. So on suspension of the rules, is that carried? Councillor Menard? Oh, sorry, councillor Bradley, your hand is up. On this next one? Okay, sorry.
Mister Mayor, sorry, can I ask a question about this just quickly to staff? He can read it, but I just I had a question afterwards.
Afterwards? Yeah, yeah, yeah. But go ahead and read the motion.
Alrighty. Whereas the city of Ottawa currently has in place a licensing by law as amended prohibiting licensees from offering or providing or permitting the offering or provision of driving instruction within the restricted areas. As set out therein, there's a map on the back of the motion. And whereas the majority thirty nine of sixty two in the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four calendar year of the complaints. Come from the Alta Vista Ward, yet there are no restricted areas in place in this ward. And whereas the Alta Vista Ward is. Currently experiencing traffic issues due to construction and road closures in the areas. Colored and whereas the Ministry of Transportation of Ontario has advised residents to contact our local municipal councillor. Therefore be it resolved that council approve an amendment to sections twenty and twenty one of schedule two of by law two thousand and two, one eighty nine to prohibit. Licensed driving school instructors within the defined area shown in red. As set it in the document attached until the first Tuesday after Labor Day two thousand twenty five being September ninth, two thousand twenty five. Being the date this amendment will be repealed. Be it further resolved that by law staff communicate with the driving schools to explain the temporary restrictions and mayor, I'll just. I'll motivate you on behalf of councillor Carr just briefly here. Heron Road is closed in one section at Bank right now for major reconstruction or area. Some councillors came out for the construction announcement. For this construction season. And I think we can all attest it's a it's a pretty big. Concern and headache for a lot of folks, necessary work and good work being done, but 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 it's a it's a. It's been difficult. So I think councillor Carr is just trying to mitigate until Heron's supposed to open back up again, which is at the end of August, two thousand twenty five. Thanks.
Okay, thank you councillor Menard, councillor Bradley.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. I did have a chance to talk with them, uh, talk to the mover of this motion today about this. So. This driving test center is actually located in my community in Gloucester South Gate Ward on the south side of Walkley. And a lot of the drivers are actually driving through the Hetherington community as well, in addition to the Alta Vista community. So it's a problem that we both share. Obviously, I can appreciate that her residents are experiencing a lot of disruption with construction. And so this drive test route is. Become more problematic as a result. I'm going to support this motion because it's temporary. If it was permanent restrictions in this area, it would not be supportive because it would exacerbate the issues that are happening in my community. And I think, you know, we don't want to prohibit. These test centers, which are important from operating anywhere in our city, but certainly by restricting certain areas, it just moves the problem somewhere else. It doesn't. Eliminate the problem. So I'm going to support it because it's only for a month and I recognize that our community is experiencing other hardships. But I do have an inquiry that I'll I'll move at the end of this meeting with respect to prohibitions in generals. I don't think that they're the best solution to this issue because it just moves the issue to another community. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Plante.
Merci beaucoup. So I'm not sure who I need to ask on staff and I acknowledge I didn't. I did not get a chance to talk to councillor Carr or councillor Bradley about this, but if I'm reading this motion correctly. Right now we have driving schools. We have one on Rido Street, by the way. And there is restrictions, as I understand it, as to where they can drive with the students. Is that correct?
Mister Mayor, that's correct in. In schedule in one of the schedules under the business licensing by law, this is a specific category that outlines in. In maps where those restrictions apply.
And and why do we have those restrictions?
I'll ask Mister Chapman. If he could come to the table and speak to this to this issue in terms of how this by law was developed.
Mister Mayor, councillor, thank you for the question. Yes. So the history, there's a long history on the the original prohibition area. So there's a lot of effort to try and. Help with the the driving school instructors to find another area. Too frequent when they're when they're bringing their their clients around. The issue with the original one was the test center. So. Once the driving school instructors discovered where the test route was, they took advantage of that to. Obviously drive their clients through that test route to make it a lot easier for them when they went out for their actual test.
So sorry, but what's wrong with that? Like, that's totally normal.
Well, it was community concerns about the increase of traffic in that area. So we had, you know, about nine licensed. Driving schools at the time with over thirty six or about thirty six instructors. So. They frequented this area on a daily basis. So. There were safety concerns. There is a school in the area. There were parallel parking around cars on the street. So there were there were concerns that were raised. So it was a direction from council at the time to go back and review this. We tried many different ways to try and curb this behavior, but.
Right, of course.
Didn't work at the time. So it was a.
And how long ago was this?
Uh, I believe this one was brought in in two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight, okay. So the only reason I ask. I I was just reading through this and thinking if someone took us to court for this, like I I cannot see any judge on the planet upholding something where we say, yes. Those drivers are okay, but those other drivers are not okay. And. You guys can delineate where certain drivers can go and certain other drivers can go. It just seemed. A bit arbitrary to me. So is there any way, and I apologize if I'm not using the proper procedures here, but can we refer this to legal? Because I would like to get some sort of analysis as to whether or not. As a municipality, we can restrict drivers who have a certain characteristic from going in certain neighborhoods. I just find that a bit weird.
Mister Mayor, the licensing by law as it currently is constituted would have been reviewed by legal services at the time. And council would have imposed the current restrictions. There's two areas in the city in the city, sorry, that are restricted for. Licensed driving instructors and licensed driving operators from not engaging in in certain areas based on the reasons that. Director Chapman articulated, and those are founded under the licensing conditions that council has under the municipal act. That being said, I understand there may be a direction coming forward at the end of this council. And certainly I understand that legal services will be participating in that direction of council so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we are sixteen years removed from that. So I I would absolutely appreciate if we could get a better. Up to date on on that legislation. It just seemed a bit odd to me, but thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation.
Now see councillor Tierney?
Great. Thanks, Mister Mayor. So I'll give a little history lesson on this and I know Roger knows a lot of it. First of all, there's only two areas in the city that have test centers, mine. And of course, my neighboring partner here councillor Bradley. And we've dealt with this for many years. I get the privilege of having everyone sewage come to my ward, but I also have the joint privilege of living blocks from a test center. And when you have cars. Well, no, it's true, Stephanie. When people actually have cars and they're going in the neighborhoods near schools, it becomes a real concern. So. I'll just preface this with saying it's very difficult to control it. And the local traffic only signs are our only prevention. For the local driving schools and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Roger, but we know I'm right. We can't, we can control that aspect of it, aspect of it in certain areas to prevent people. And there's hundreds of people that take tests a day, hundreds streaming up the street. You can imagine. What this does right next to the Cefmeryon, a local school, all these different situations that occur very dangerous. So to prevent them using the test routes, which under provincial legislation, they're allowed to use those. We can't prevent. A driver's test car that's being used for a. Provincial road test from going up our roads. We have no controls of that. What we do have controls of is preventing local driving schools from using the actual test route. Is that a fair assessment, Chief Chapman?
Mister Mayor, councillor, yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. So it is a real localized issue. And again, I would preach to the province if they want to move them around the city. Every. every, you know, every time they go to renew a lease, bill free. But we get the burden of it in our two areas, just like other things we do. And we try to deal with it best as the local council. So thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor Tierney. Councillor Lo?
Thanks very much. I first got my G one in two thousand and seven, fun fact. I'm, I'm looking at, I'm thinking of more the operational aspect of this. How, how does, how can this be enforced? So yeah, first question, how, how can this be enforced? Because sometimes I think I do see driving instructors, they don't put their thing up. The label isn't always very discernible at the back. So how, how would this be enforced?
Mr. Mayor, without getting into specific enforcement tactics that we use when we do the enforcement, I can give you a bit of background on some of the, we have had an increase in complaints recently. So I think we're over two hundred complaints in the last two years. And we had about thirty-six, thirty-six charges in twenty twenty-four and already this year. So there's been, you know, some significant amount of activity still happening in those prohibited areas. Often it's driving instructors with their roof signs on, so obviously easily identifiable. But we do have other enforcement tactics that we use to, to be able to find the ones that are operating without roof signs, which often leads to also revealing that they're unlicensed instructors. So other enforcement activity takes place there.
Okay, so my follow-up question then is if you are a prospective licensee living within those red areas, is the expectation that you'll have to go outside to pick up your, your instructor, for your instructor to pick you up? Or can they sort of go in there and take the most direct route out?
Mr. Mayor, councillor, thank you for the question. They are able to go into those areas. So if you're a client, they can go into the area obviously and pick up, but they must leave the prohibited area immediately.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brockington.
Mayor, during COVID, the province opened a temporary testing center on McCarthy Road in River Ward. And council endorsed a temporary no-go zone in part of the Hung Club neighborhood that saw a substantial increase in traffic, particularly the driving school, schools. So there is precedence already that this council, this term of council, I believe, or maybe the last one endorsed a temporary restriction. So I'm willing to support the motion before us today. And just in the interest of transparency, River Ward also has one of the two permanent zones. We are right beside, three blocks away from the, the testing center. And before I was elected, council endorsed a no-go zone for a particular area that saw, when you hear about hundreds of cars being out on the streets on the weekends on McCarthy, it's not an exaggeration. They are everywhere. And so I think if we want to be strategic, as we, we talk about the ministry encouraging these schools to go out, a broader footprint for their tests and not use the same neighborhoods that the instructors are comfortable with, but go out there and have their students use different neighborhoods. But all this to say, Mayor, we have endorsed a temporary no-go zone in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Is that carried? Okay, notices of motion. Councillor Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And with the will of council, I'll just read the therefore be it resolved clauses. This is to rename a park in my ward after her excellency, the Governor General. And I appreciate the opportunity to work with the mayor on this. Therefore, be it resolved that the park known as Whitewood Park, located at fifty-four ninety Whitewood Avenue, be renamed Mary Simon Park to recognize her outstanding contributions to Canada and celebrate her legacy as an advocate for indigenous peoples. And be it further resolved that an appropriate stand and plaque be installed displaying name and including a brief history of Mary Simon's contributions. And be it further resolved that all costs related to the production and installation of the stand, plaque and subsequent event be funded through the mayor's office. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Are there any other notices of motion? Okay, motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor Devine?
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Is that carried? Confirmation bylaw, councillor Devine?
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Is that carried? Inquiries. Councillor Johnson?
With the passing of provincial legislation allowing three units as of right on any service law, my office has received several inquiries and concerns from residents regarding how many individual unit, how individual units are assessed and are or are not assigned an individual tax role. As council has recognized the housing crisis as a priority to address in this term and that secondary dwelling units count toward the city's progress in achieving our housing targets, there should be further clarity to council and the public on how these units are defined, taxed and serviced across various departments at the City of Ottawa. Number one, how does the city define the difference between legal individual units qualifying under the three units as of right versus a secondary unit? How are secondary and additional units classified for tax purposes at the City of Ottawa? Is there any difference if they are situated below grade, connected through an internal entrance or a coach house? How does building code relay information about additional units to MPAC? How is finance receiving the information from MPAC? What is the City of Ottawa doing to ensure that residents understand what taxation structure they will fall under and what services they will receive depending on the type of additional unit built? When it comes to solid waste collection specifically, with collection fees being paid through property taxes, what is the process used by collectors on collection day to know how many units are in a building and the corresponding amount of garbage collection they are entitled to with the three-item garbage policy? How can a property owner have a basement unit or coach home identified for individual collection, understanding that this would require them to pay additional solid waste fees? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Tierney?
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. You probably noticed some of the stories recently of the traffic situations in the, specifically in the east end of the city. On October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, the Transportation Committee at the time, through motion, directed staff to conduct a review of the road closures over twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, resulting in construction activity for Stage Two Light Rail East Extension Project. Information was provided to council by Richard Holder, Director of Rail Communications Program via memo on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Can staff update the information to council encompassing the closures that have taken place from November twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-five for the Line One East Extension in addition to the information that was already provided in the original motion? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tierney. Councillor Bradley?
Thanks so much. This is really just involved up to the discussion we just had, so I'll just read the questions. One, could staff please identify all areas within the city that currently prohibit, restrict licensees from offering or providing or permitting the offering of provisions of driving instruction? Two, could staff please identify the criteria used to implement such provision and restriction? And is this approach applied proactively and equally to the areas that meet that criteria? And three, which I just added, so I apologize to the clerk's office, what other tools have staff explored to mitigate community concerns beyond complete prohibitions?
Thank you, councillor Bradley. And there is a, an inquiry from councillor Carr, which will be read by councillor Menard.
Thank you, Mayor. Extreme heat events between two thousand and twenty twenty led to more than six hundred and seventy more deaths than usual across Canada's twelve largest cities, according to Statistics Canada. Extreme weather events have also, also have the potential for injury, illness and death and restricted access to food, water, healthcare and community supports and isolation and disruption of infrastructure like power outages, property damages, evacuations. Organizations, including the Canadian Association of Physicians for the Environment and the Canadian Environmental Law Association, have been advocating for municipal actions to support efforts to better manage maximum heat, including increasing access to cooling in the homes of low-income renters and owners, including through distribution of cooling devices with priority to high-risk groups, including those on social assistance, children, pregnant people and older adults. A maximum temperature bylaw, improving data collection on the challenges of extreme heat and the effectiveness of policy solutions. Currently, the City of Ottawa has two programs in place that can help supply air conditioning units to lower-income individuals. These two programs are the OW Discretionary Health Benefits Program that is available to the recipients of benefits under the OW ODSP and Assistance for Children with Severe Disabilities Program and the Essential Health and Social Supports Program. Could staff please indicate how many individuals receive air conditioning benefits under each of these two programs? The percentage of applicants who are successful in grants under this program and whether there are any gaps in vulnerable groups that are not being addressed under these programs? And two, could staff please comment on the feasibility of increasing these programs to include the following elements? Not requiring a prescription, including seniors who have aged out of Ontario Works Discretionary Health Benefits and using an application system that includes the opportunity for a phone application. Ottawa currently has no maximum temperature bylaw. However, staff have noted that any bylaw that prescribes a maximum heat for residential units could have an effect on tenants who would likely bear the cost of the retrofits needed to install air conditioning. However, the province of Ontario has passed amendments to the RTA to provide some tenant protections related to air conditioning as part of Bill ninety-seven, but these have not yet been proclaimed into force. In light of the amendments to the RTA and a recent call by Ottawa MPP McKenney for a provincial maximum heat law, could city staff on bylaw advise on the possibility of including a maximum temperature standards within the existing property standards bylaw in the interim? A separate inquiry would put to the Ottawa Public Health Board on the current data tracking of heat-related deaths and emergency room visits related to exposure to heat during extreme heat events. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Menard. Are there any other inquiries? Okay, motion to adjourn. Councillor Devine?
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of twenty-third July twenty twenty-five be adjourned.
Is that carried? Thank you, everyone.